Good morning, everyone. It is 9:00 AM on October the fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. We're going to call a regular Commissioners' Court meeting into order, and we have all four Commissioners present, myself. We have a quorum. Next item on the agenda will be prayer and pledge of allegiance.
Mr. Bowen, please.
Let us pray. Father, we need a much-needed rain. It's just so dry that we just need rain desperately. So send us some rain, ask you to continue to be with Atticus County. God has protected us and let us be with this court. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Constitution, which stands one nation under the one, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have item number three, public comments. Do we have anybody wishing to speak today on public comments? Second call for public comments. Don't have anything? And the last call for public comments. Anybody? Okay. Item number four, Policy and Procedure Committee, discuss, take appropriate action to approve the recognition and presentation of Employee of the Quarter for Quarter Number Three in two thousand and twenty-five. Do we have a committee here today? Pretty much most of y'all? Okay. So, we're going to present to Cindy Galindo, our Employee of the Quarter.
We appreciate you and everything you do.
Let me tell you something. When the auditor's gone, this is the one with a key. She's got it down. We go way back. We went back thirty years. We worked together, and I have to tell you, she's had a lot of pleasure to work with him. Done a great job, and very much appreciated. So we have the committee come up, please.
Sheriff, for cheating, you get to put your hat on. We don't have to put my hat on.
Ready? One, two, three. One, two, three. Ready? One, two, three. One, two, three.
Perfect. Congratulations, Cindy. You all are great. She's gone through, how many auditors you been through? Woo! Fourth auditor. That's pretty amazing. Glad to have you around. We appreciate everything you do, Cindy. Good job. Next item on the agenda, number five, Andrea Rathmail, discuss appropriate action to approve the proclamation recognizing October two thousand and twenty-five as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Atticus County. So we have a proclamation today that we need to read into the minutes. Whereas one in every three Texans will experience some of the domestic violence during their lifetime, and whereas fleeing domestic violence is the leading cause of homelessness for women and for children, whereas domestic violence remains the leading cause of death in pregnant women in the United States, whereas the impact of domestic violence is wide-ranging, directly affecting individuals and society as a whole here in this community and throughout the United States and our world, whereas we are committed to increase public awareness of domestic violence and sending a clear message to abusers that domestic violence is not and will not be tolerated in Atticus County. Whereas domestic violence has deadly and devastating consequences for families, but it can be prevented. Preventing domestic violence requires the collective voice and power of individuals, families, institutions, and systems. Now therefore, I, Weldon Coo, Atticus County Judge, do hereby proclaim October two thousand and twenty-five as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in recognition of the important work done by domestic violence programs and victim service providers. I urge all citizens to actively participate in scheduled activities and programs sponsored by Safer Path, Family Violence Shelter, and other community organizations that will work toward the elimination of domestic violence. Would y'all please come forward? And thank y'all very, very much for what you do. Y'all want to make a presentation? Sure, please.
Thank you all so much for having us here today. I'm here to recognize that it's about awareness month. We are here at Safer Path, family violence shelter, and the local twenty-four-hour safe shelter and hotline, and all of our services are free to men, women, and children. Our campaign, No Excuse for Abuse, Start by Believing, is so important.
Sorry about that. Hang on. We're going to get this right.
Perfect. Start over. Okay.
Television audience can hear you.
Yes, of course. So, thank y'all so much for having us and proclaiming October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. We're here with Safer Path Family Violence Shelter, the local twenty-four-hour safe shelter and hotline for victims of domestic violence and sexual assault. Our campaign, No Excuse for Abuse and Start by Believing, is so important. Believing someone when they come to you, it could change the trajectory of their story and their outcome in helping them find safety. So that is so important for us to share. Statistically, it's one in three Texans that experience domestic violence. That's one in three in our community. That's not one in three elsewhere, right? That's one in three in our school with children's parents. And so, it's so important to talk about statistics, and I wanted to bring some numbers to y'all about our last year at Safer Path. So we had four thousand and eighty-four shelter stays. Of those shelter stays, we had sixteen hundred fifty-nine adults and two thousand and four hundred twenty-five children. That's a lot of people. That's a lot of children as well. We had twelve hundred and four clients served in a full year, fifteen hundred hotline calls, and of those twelve hundred clients served, we provided twenty-four thousand services. So we are just so honored to be here and to be a resource for the community. I want to allow Andrea to step up and talk about some of the trainings that we're doing as well.
Thank y'all so much. I see y'all's purple. Thank you so much, Sheriff. We appreciate y'all for recognizing October's Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Just like Cheyenne said, we've got a slideshow going up there talking about the need for shelter in our area, and those twenty-five thousand services that she mentioned that we provided, everything is free. So we provided twenty-five thousand times free services, life-saving services, to families fleeing domestic violence. And so, we think about what domestic violence, the end of the worst of domestic violence is homicide, right? People can lose their lives due to domestic violence. Every year, the Texas Council on Family Violence comes out with the Honoring Texas Victims Report, and this report is compiled from data across the state in regards to intimate partner violence fatalities. So, in two thousand and twenty-three, and this is, or I'm sorry, in two thousand and twenty-four, this is a year behind because it takes a whole year to gather the data, a hundred and sixty-one Texans were killed by their intimate partners. That's a hundred and thirty-seven women and twenty-four male victims. So again, we're seeing females or women being the predominantly highest fatality rate over men every year. And also, that's not included in that one sixty-one, seventeen bystanders were killed just by association with the victims. This is children, this is friends, this is family members, and when we look at the ripple effects and the impacts of domestic violence, it goes further reaching than just we're looking at the victim. I'm going to talk more about this at our Shine a Light vigil. We encourage y'all to come. We would be happy for all of y'all to join. We have some guest speakers and survivor speakers, and what we do at our Shine a Light vigil is we recognize and honor these victims in our community. Atticus County was not on the list of counties that had a fatality in two thousand and twenty-four. We were on there in twenty-three. We will likely be on there in twenty-five, unfortunately, but the, like Cheyenne mentioned, some of the trainings that we're doing, we were, we got to do training with Atticus County Sheriff's Office around domestic violence, and we look forward to the ongoing trainings to have with the deputies because they're the ones who are responding to this, right? We want to make sure that we're all on the same page in our response to domestic violence. So, again, we encourage y'all to come Thursday, October twenty-third, seven PM to eight PM, right here. So thank y'all so much. And we have Rhonda Williamson, our executive director, is here with us as well. So thank y'all for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
If y'all haven't attended the county night vigil, it's a pretty interesting deal. Really is. Pretty emotional. Motion made for, to approve the proclamation.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bowen. Is there any further discussion?
I want to add real quick. I heard their presentation at the Rotary Club the other day, and thank you for that. It was great. And I don't want to get too far into depth because we got other business to attend to, but they're struggling right now with financial, you know, through their governing bodies and stuff because of the shutdowns. And so if you get the opportunity to share and give, it's really needed right now, and I'm sure any one of these three ladies would be happy to speak with anybody on that. So, just, I just wanted to bring that up because it's a good opportunity for you to have an outreach. So, thank y'all.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, motion carries. Thank you, ladies. You want a picture of this?
One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Bye-bye. Okay, item number six, Mary Artese, myself, with Camino Real, discuss, take appropriate action to approve the memorandum of understanding with Camino Real Community Services, Atticus County, for the community-based mental health services. You want to come up here, please? Ms. Artese, you want to make a speech?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Just wanted to bring up part of CCBHC for Camino Real, we have to have a memorandum of understanding. So, we do refer veterans for services and vice versa. So that is the only reason we came forward, to get it signed as part of a requirement for Camino Real. Thank you.
I totally agree. It's something we need to do.
Yes, sir.
Motion made by Commissioner Gillespie?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner, who? Commissioner Riley? Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, that motion carries. Thank you very much. Item number seven, District Attorney Audrey Lewis, discuss, take appropriate action concerning personnel, existing employee, Genovisa Sidell, position Administrative Assistant, pay rate would be salary adjustment within the budget from thirty-six thousand one hundred to thirty-nine thousand. Salary budget area is zero four seven four hundred four three six. Start date would be October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, current employee. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, that motion carries. And the next, existing employee, Renee Williams, position Administrative Assistant, pay rate would be a salary adjustment within the budget of forty-two, forty thousand to forty-two thousand. Salary budget area is zero four seven four hundred four zero four. Start date would be October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, current employee. Motion made by Commissioner Riley?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bowen. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, that motion carries. Thank you very much. Item number seven, District Attorney Audrey Lewis, discuss, take appropriate action concerning personnel, existing employee, Genoviva Sidel, position Administrative Assistant, pay rate would be salary adjustment within the budget from thirty-six thousand one hundred to thirty-nine thousand. Salary budget area is zero four seven four hundred four three six. Start date would be October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, current employee. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, that motion carries. And the next, existing employee, Renee Williams, position Administrative Assistant, pay rate would be a salary adjustment within the budget of forty-two, forty thousand to forty-two thousand. Salary budget area is zero four seven four hundred four zero four. Start date would be October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, current employee. Motion made by Commissioner Riley?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Pavelic. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, that motion carries. And the next, existing employee, Renee Williams, position Administrative Assistant, pay rate would be a salary adjustment within the budget of forty-two, forty thousand to forty-two thousand. Salary budget area is zero four seven four hundred four zero four. Start date would be October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, current employee. Motion made by Commissioner Riley?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Pavelic. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, that motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Price. Item number eight, Judge Vaughn, JP two, discuss, take appropriate action concerning personnel. New employee, Araceli Yurisigui, the position will be Justice Clerk, pay rate will be nineteen dollars and twenty-three cents hourly, salary budget area is zero one two four two eight four zero three. Start date would be October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, physical and drug test pending.
Her physical and drug test came back good, so she's going to be starting today.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Pavelic?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bowen. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, that motion carries. Next is new employee, Melissa Casillas, position is Justice Court Clerk, pay rate would be eighteen dollars ninety-four cents hourly, salary budget area is zero one two four two eight four zero two. Start date would be October twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-five, physical and drug tester pending.
She's still pending. She's expected to start on that start date, so.
Motion made by Commissioner Bowen?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Pavelic. Any further discussion? All those in favor, that motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have number nine, Courtney Greer, EMS Director, discuss, take appropriate action concerning personnel. New employee, Destiny Satello, position would be PRN EMT, pay rate would be fifteen dollars hourly, salary budget area is zero four one four hundred five one eight. Start date would be October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, physical and drug test pending. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Yes, Destiny and Darius are going to be the same. They just finished EMT school and would like to come on PRN.
Motion made by Commissioner Riley?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Pavelic. Any further discussion? All those in favor, that motion carries. Next, we have new employee, Darius Gill, position PRN EMT, pay rate would be fifteen dollars hourly, salary budget area is zero four one four hundred five one eight. Start date would be October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, physical and drug test pending. Ms. Greer?
He's going to be the same as Destiny.
Motion made by Commissioner Gillespie? Seconded by Commissioner Riley? Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, that motion carries. Next, we have new employee, Michael Gutierrez, position PRN Paramedic, pay rate would be twenty-two dollars hourly, salary budget area is zero four one four hundred five one eight. Start date would be October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, physical and drug test pending.
He's going to be a paramedic. His pay rate's higher because he's a paramedic versus the previous EMT positions. He wanted to come on full-time, but we didn't have a spot, so he was coming on PRN until one opens up.
Motion made by Commissioner Pavelic?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bowen. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, that motion carries. And next employee, existing employee, Roy Salceda, position Advanced EMT, pay rate would be twenty dollars fifty cents hourly, salary budget area is zero four one four hundred four three zero. Start date would be October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, current employee.
Yes, Roy's worked with us since two thousand and twenty-three. He was EMT. He has put himself through Advanced EMT school, so now he is cleared to do more interventions and more types of patient care. So we bumped him his pay up and his title.
Motion made by Commissioner Gillespie?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Pavelic. Any further discussion? All those in favor, motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have Ronald Sanchez, Fire Marshal, discuss, take appropriate action to adopt an order restricting outdoor burning, which is a burn ban, effective October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, for a period of sixty days until December tenth, two thousand and twenty-five, and allow a fire marshal to end the burn ban without returning to Commissioners' Court for approval when the fire marshal determines that the circumstances present in the unincorporated areas of the county no longer create a public hazard that would be ex- exonerated by an outdoor burning. Good morning, Fire Marshal.
Morning, Judge. Morning, Commissioners. We're gonna, since we're still under a severe drought, we're gonna recommend extending the burn ban sixty more days, which will take us into December thirteenth. No chance of rain right now, and we haven't had any measurable rain at all.
Motion made by Commissioner Riley?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Pavelic. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, that motion carries. Good job.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Item number eleven, Timothy Gutierrez, Attention Superintendent, discuss, take appropriate action concerning personnel. New employee, Angela Anne Estrada, position Part-Time Control Technician, pay rate would be twelve dollars hourly, salary budget area is zero three nine four hundred four zero six. Start date would be October twenty, two thousand and twenty-five, physical and drug test pending. Mr. Gutierrez?
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. We have Ms. Estrada, she's wanting to go ahead and go through for our Part-Time Control Tech. That's going to be one of two positions, and we feel that she'd be a good fit for it.
Motion made by Commissioner Gillespie?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bowen. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, that motion carries. Next, we have Francisco Javier Rodriguez, Juvenile Supervision Officer Two, pay rate would be twenty-two dollars and three cents hourly, salary budget area is zero three nine four hundred five six two. Start date would be October seventh, two thousand and twenty-five. How did that start date come to that?
Oh, that must have been an error on my part.
So, today's the start date, or what?
Yes. No, the twentieth would be the start date.
The twentieth. So the start date would be October twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five, physical drug tester pending.
Yes, sir. For this gentleman here, we were able to go ahead and interview him, vet him, and anything like that, and he has some experience in the corrections field, and we would like to go ahead and have him on board with us.
Motion made by Commissioner Pavelic? Seconded by Commissioner Riley? All those in favor, motion carries. Next, we have new employee, Raul Garcia, position Juvenile Supervision Officer Two, pay rate would be twenty-two dollars and three cents an hour, salary budget area is zero three nine four hundred five six two. Start date would be October twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five, physical and drug test pending.
Yes, sir. Mr. Garcia wants to come on board with us. He also has some corrections experience under his belt, and we think he'd be a good fit for the position as well.
Motion made by Commissioner Gillespie?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bowen. Any further discussion? All those in favor, motion carries. Next, existing employee, Carlos Gomez, position Sergeant, twenty-five dollars sixty-two cents hourly, salary budget area is zero three nine four hundred four zero three. Start date would be October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, current employee.
Yes, sir. Carlos Gomez is currently a Corporal with our facility. He's shown a lot of promise. He's stepped up the plate, wants to continue moving on up, and we think he'd be a good fit for the Sergeant position.
Motion made by Commissioner Riley? Seconded by Commissioner Gillespie? Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, that motion carries. Next, we have existing employee, Selena Hurtah, position Sergeant, pay rate would be twenty-five dollars and sixty-two cents hourly, salary budget area is zero three nine four hundred four zero three. Start date would be October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, current employee.
Yes, sir. Selena Hurtah is currently a Corporal with us for the night shift. We had lost our Sergeant position due to quality of life changes, and she's been running it ever since, and she'd be a good fit for the Sergeant position.
Motion made by Commissioner Gillespie?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Pavelic. Any further discussion? All those in favor, motion carries. Next, we have existing employee, Dominique Cruz, position Corporal, pay rate would be twenty-four dollars forty cents hourly, salary budget area is zero three nine four hundred four zero three. Start date would be October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, current employee.
Yes, sir. Mr. Cruz has shown a lot of promise. He's been showing willingness to want to show up as a leadership, a leadership position, and we think he'd be a good fit for the Corporal position.
Motion made by Commissioner Pavelic?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Riley? Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, that motion carries. And last, we have existing employee, Isaac Garza, position Corporal, pay rate would be twenty-four dollars forty cents hourly, salary budget area is zero three nine four hundred four zero three. Start date would be today, October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, current employee.
Thank you. This is a similar condition such as Cruz. Officer Garza would be a good fit for the Night Corporal position. We'd like to move forward with that.
Motion made by Commissioner Gillespie?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bowen. Any further discussion? All those in favor, that motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Item number twelve, Brittany Van Curran, Rural Development, discuss, take appropriate action concerning approval or denial of the certificate exception for the Campbell Callahan family on FM seventeen eighty-four in Precinct One.
Good morning.
Yes, ma'am.
They have applied for the family exception to the subdivision plating rules, and they have met all of the requirements in my office, and I recommend approval.
Motion made by Commissioner Gillespie?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bowen. Any further discussion? All those in favor, that motion carries. Item number thirteen, Brittany Van Curran, Rural Development, discuss, take appropriate action concerning approval or denial of the certificate exception for the Mato family in Turtle Lane in Precinct One. Ms. Van Curran?
Yes, sir. They have also applied for the family exception, and they have met all of the requirements, and I recommend approval.
Motion made by Commissioner Gillespie?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Pavelic. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, that motion carries. Item number fourteen, Brittany Van Curran, Rural Development, discuss, take appropriate action concerning approval or denial, approval or denial of the final plat, the replat of a portion of Block Two of the Lemmingtown site on East North Street in Precinct One. Ms. Van Curran?
Yes, sir. This is, they're taking small parcels and creating Uh, this is, uh, they're taking small parcels and creating two large pieces. It all fits within our subdivision regulations, and I recommend approval.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Gillespie?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bowen. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, that motion carries. Item number fifteen, Brittany Van Curran, Rural Development. Discuss to take appropriate action concerning approval or denial of the amended plat for the Northfield subdivision, Lot fourteen, in both Unit One and Unit Two in Precinct One.
Yes, sir. This one is kind of a weird one. Uh, when the Northfield subdivision was created, there was a Lot fourteen in both Unit One and Unit Two that backed up to each other. Uh, Lots fourteen in both units have always been held by the same owner. Uh, but there is a discrepancy between the two original plats as to where the property line is between the two lots of fourteen. So this, this is the amending plat to correct that and finally solidify where that property line is for the two lots.
Move for approval.
Motion made by Commissioner Gillespie?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Pavelik. Is there any further discussion? So this was a correction to the original plat that was filed back then?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor, that motion carries. Item number sixteen, Brittany Van Curran, Rural Development. You don't see any reason that we take all these in one motion?
Yes, sir. That's fine.
Okay. Discuss to take appropriate action concerning approval or denial of the following permits. Discuss to take appropriate action to approve a road board permit for Frontier Communications on Stevens Road in Precinct Two, on Stevens Road Crossing Number Two in Precinct Two, on, um, Mayhand Road in Precinct Two, on Rossville Road on Crossing Number One in Precinct Two, Rossville Road Crossing Number Two in Precinct Two, and F, uh, Hikeman Road in Precinct Two.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Bowen?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Gillespie to approve all these in one motion.
Correct.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, that motion carries. Item number seventeen, um, discuss, Brittany Van Curran, Rural Development. Discuss to take appropriate action concerning approval or denial of right-of-way permits. We're going to take these separately, though. Discuss, take approval, approval or denial, right-of-way permit for Frontier Communications on Hikeman Road in Precinct Two.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Bowen?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Gillespie. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, that motion carries. Item B, discuss to take appropriation, discuss, take appropriate action concerning approval or denial of the right-of-way permit for Frontier Communications on Rossville Road in Precinct Two.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Bowen?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner, uh, Pavelik. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, that motion carries. Item number C, discuss or take appropriate action concerning approval or denial for the right-of-way permit for Frontier Communications on Somerset Road in Precinct Two.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Bowen?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Gillespie. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, that motion carries. And item D, discuss or take appropriate action concerning approval or denial of the right-of-way permit for Frontier Communications on Stevens Road in Precinct Two.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Bowen?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Gillespie. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, that motion carries. Item number eighteen, Brittany Van Curran, Rural Development. Discuss to take appropriate action concerning approval or denial, certificate exception for Leisure Rentals LLC on O Pearsaw Road in Precinct Three. Ms. Van Curran?
Yes, sir. This is a ten-acre split. It meets all of our requirements, and I recommend approval.
I move.
Motion made by Commissioner Pavelik?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Gillespie. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, that motion carries. Item number nineteen, Brittany Van Curran, with Rural Development. Discuss to take appropriate action concerning approval or denial of certificate exception for Miranda Weiderhold on Private Road D fifty-five in Precinct Three. Ms. Van Curran?
Yes, sir. This is a ten-acre split. It does meet all of our requirements, and I recommend approval.
Motion made by Commissioner Pavelik?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Gillespie. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, that motion carries. Item number twenty, Brittany Van Curran, with Rural Development. Discuss to take appropriate action concerning approval or denial of certificate exception for Gary and Dana McKinney on County Road three thirty-one in Precinct Three.
Yes, sir. They did a ten-acre split, and I recommend approval.
Motion made by Commissioner Pavelik? Seconded by Commissioner Bowen. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, again, that motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Van Curran. Item number twenty-one, Justin Voskus with IT. Discuss to take appropriate action concerning, uh, accepting quote from TransUnion for TLO XP for online investigative services for all four constables at sixteen hundred and twenty dollars annually from the budget of zero one two four seven six six eight four and authorizing County Judge to sign. Voskus?
Good morning. Constable Salazar for Precinct Two brought this to my attention, the software that he, uh, had a trial on for fourteen days. I talked to the representative at TransUnion just about the software in general and thought it would be, uh, useful for all of our constables to use. So I reached out to each one of them. They said they would be very interested in using it. Um, uh, what it does is it conducts, uh, investigations into people. It finds individuals and properties and businesses pretty quickly, confirms identities, um, detects and mitigates fraud. It can investigate criminal and driving histories, identify liens, bankruptcies, and judgments, and recover outstanding debt efficiently. Uh, so it has a lot of uses, uh, in, uh, law enforcement capabilities, and they're just the constable's responsibilities. So, um, there is a docu, docu-sign that they sent to me, and I'll send that over to you if this is approved. Um, but I recommend approval.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Gillespie?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bowen. Is there any further discussion?
Judge, we just need to review the agreement before you sign the agreement. You can, you can approve the quote, but County Attorney's Office hasn't finished reviewing the agreement.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, that motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item number twenty-two, Commissioner Gillespie. Discuss to take appropriate action on acceptance of approximately one thousand tons of road billings being donated to Attisco County Precinct One by Clark, by Clark Construction. The material was located on I thirty-seven south of FM ninety-nine and was picked up on October first, twenty twenty-five, Attisco County Precinct One. Commissioner?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would just want to put this on for, uh, making it transparent of what's been happening in our precinct. Uh, I move for approval.
Motion made by Commissioner Gillespie?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bowen. Any further discussion? All those in favor, that motion carries. Item number twenty-three, Tracy Barrera County Auditor. Discuss to take appropriate action concerning the review acceptance of, and certification of the following grants awarded to the Texas, awarded from the Texas Indigent Defense Commission, TIDC. A, FY twenty twenty-five twenty-six Continued Improvement Grant in the amount of one million eight hundred eighty-six thousand two hundred ninety-five dollars for the Attisco County Rural Regional Public Defender's Office. Current grant multi-county match up to nine hundred forty-three dollars and nine hundred forty-three thousand one hundred forty-six dollars. Ms. Barrera?
Hi, yes. This is the existing grant that we have. This is a continuation. Um, and the reason I say up to is because we only are responsible for what is spent. The grant goes up to that amount, but to date, we haven't ever hit the full amount of the award. Um, we've gotten close now that we're fully staffed, but that's why it's written that way. This is just the regular, like I said, it's a continuation of the grant that we're currently have.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Gillespie?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Pavelik. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, that motion carries. Item B, uh, Fiscal Year twenty twenty-five twenty-six Improvement Grant in the amount of thirty-seven, is that thirty-seven thousand six hundred dollars, uh, for the Attisco County Regional Public Defender Office for equipment and internship costs. New grant, no county match.
Yes, this is a new, brand-new grant, um, that was applied for and was awarded. It will cover when they have interns during the summertime mainly. Um, that way, because the internship the county has doesn't allow for college students, so this way she can have college students, and they'll be able to have those interns, and it is paid one hundred percent.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Gillespie? Seconded by Commissioner Riley. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, that motion carries. And item C, Fiscal Year twenty twenty-five twenty-six Improvement Grant in the amount of two hundred thousand two hundred dollars for the Public Defender Mental Health Unit for Attisco County. New grant, Attisco County matches fifty thousand and fifty dollars. Ms. Barrera?
This was a grant that had been talked about, um, was applied for. We, this is only Attisco County. This is not a multi-county. This is only Attisco County. Um, we did not budget for the match. Um, I don't think we were aware there was a match, so this one is, I think it's a good, a good thing. I think we're just kind of putting the cart before the horse. Um, that's just where I feel, and the main thing is.
Yeah. If I can intervene with that, I don't think we're quite there yet for this particular grant. Uh, I think we're, like you said, we're putting the horse before the carriage, or the other way around, carriage in front of the horse. Uh, I, I'm going to ask that it's a good, it's a good thing, but in time, we will need it, and we will probably take advantage of it, but currently being with just Attisco some match, uh, I, I just don't think right now we're really ready for it, and we didn't budget for it.
I talked to Judge Dillingham, and I've also visited with, um, the chairman, Judge Herbert. My problem with this is I'm disappointed that they go apply for these grants and don't talk to us about it and let us know about it, because then it's embarrassing to us when the grant comes forward, and we don't have the money to fund it. And I think it's wrong that they do that, and it's disrespectful to, to this court. Um, I'm very disappointed in that, and we didn't, we didn't budget fifty thousand dollars for it, and I think it's wrong. So, um, we, we don't have the funds for it, so I, I suggest we deny the grant.
We just don't have to accept this one, but I would need a motion for that if that is the court's pleasure.
I make a motion for non-acceptance on C.
Motion made by Commissioner Gillespie?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bowen. Is there any further discussion?
I would like to say that this will come back in time, and in time, we will probably need to take advantage of it. So I'm not, I'm not saying it's a bad thing, but next year, one and everything is more put together, and we're needing it. I think then, you know, because I'm kicking it out today, don't think that I'm against it. I think we're good with it, but just not right now. We don't need it. I just had to say that. I'm sorry.
I'm not sure I'm good with it, because I think there's enough attorneys over there to handle what we have at the current time. So, uh, any further discussion? All those in favor, that motion carries. Item number twenty, thank you, Ms. Barrera. Item number twenty-four, discuss to take appropriate action to accept and approve any local corporation agreements with the City of Jurdington, City of Pleasanton, City of Potteet for the Cowboy Connect Services, subject to review and approval by the various city councils. Uh, Ms. Felice, I think we completed that, right?
Yes, um, Adella reviewed it. We, sorry. Yes, uh, my office, Adella reviewed it, and we've sent it out to all of the cities for approval by their city councils. So once you approve it, as long as there's no changes, it should all be able to be signed.
Move for approval.
Motion made by Commissioner Gillespie? Seconded by Commissioner Riley.
Can I, can I ask real quick? Uh, Charlotte, it goes to Charlotte as well. Do they not pay into this? Okay.
Did they, do the buses run to Charlotte? I don't think they do.
I thought they went a couple of times a week to Charlotte.
They just make the. Yeah, they don't, they don't go to Charlotte. Just, I know the Art, the Art bus does, or what do they call it? Um, is this for twenty twenty-five or twenty twenty-six?
It's to start in October first and go through September thirty-first, twenty twenty-six.
September thirtieth of next year? Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, that motion carries. Thank you. Um, next, we have item number twenty-five. Uh, myself and Curtis Fixers discuss to take appropriate action on the County Infrastructure Project Monthly Report. Good morning, Curtis.
Good morning, Your Honor. Commissioners. Uh, Sheriff's Office addition is, is getting very close to being complete. They're currently working on the interior finish-out, including the electrical trim-out and painting the door frames. Uh, the rooftop units are being connected today, and they plan on starting that up by the end of the week, and then once it's conditioned, they'll be able to get the flooring in there to acclimate and then do the flooring. Um, roof flashing and lightning arrest system are being installed currently. That'll complete all the roof work. Windows are scheduled this re, week. Remainder of the concrete to include the sidewalk on the east side and at the, uh, current entrance to fill in the stairway on the, uh, west side will be done this week as well. The only remaining stoppage that we have currently is the, uh, new duct work we're waiting for for the patrol room expansion. Uh, the new training room is supposed to be on-site in the next couple of days, and they'll get that installed. Um, and then they'll be able to complete the grid in that area. Uh, still hopeful for completion, uh, on the addition, end of October, beginning of November. They, they're getting pretty close on that. Tax office addition, they got quite a bit done over the last few days. Uh, we've completed all of the interior demo, with the exception of the ceiling grid, uh, the sub-panel and electrical that's being removed. Uh, the power to the addition is supposed to be connected either today or tomorrow. Tile in the addition is installed. Uh, they're waiting to grout once the drywall and the transit action windows are done. Uh, couldn't do that until we got the upgraded electrical in there that we approved last week. Uh, all the interior, or I'm sorry, exterior concrete work was completed this weekend to include the sidewalk repair, the curb rebuild, and the, uh, ramp at the new entry door. And they were actually able to pebble finish that, and it looks extremely good. It, it matches quite well. And then the electricians have started making their runs in the crawl space for the new, uh, power to the, to the workstations. Uh, ME building, they've got the job site installed. The building pad and parking areas are all blue topped and ready to form. Uh, City of Pleasanton told them flat work is, they're going to have to wait for the building permit for that, even though it's site work. Uh, they're going to start trenching the primary utilities this week, and then, of course, we have the groundbreaking on Friday at ten. Any questions about anything?
Move for approval.
Motion made by Commissioner Gillespie? Seconded by Commissioner Riley. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
The addition will be done.
Sorry?
Right around there. The expansion on the patrol room, and I'm sorry, there's something just came up, uh, Friday, I think it was. Um, we've got the quote on the furniture for the expansion of the patrol room. They're going to have to revise it, because they included four additional units that we have. I have to go look still. Perry thinks it's four, but, four, it is four that are coming out. Okay. Yeah, one for sure will go, be able to go back in. We're not sure if two will. We're not sure if two will. Uh, and then we have the one in the hallway over, that comes from the lobby, that will also be moved. Uh, how long it'll take for that to come in, we don't know, but we'll, we'll be getting that ordered. Um, and then we'll just have the renovation of the one office that we're making larger and then throwing in there. So wrap it up. That'll go longer than November.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Item number twenty-six, uh, update and take appropriate action concerning judges, commissioners, and other elected officials' training, course certifications. Record any hours or certificates in the Commissioners' Court minutes and other documents not related to education that need to be filled or filed with the court records. Uh, I completed four continuous education hours in twenty twenty-five Far West Texas Judges and Commissioners Conference on September seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, uh, in Trilingual. And, uh, Commissioner Gillespie completed ten continuous hour education hours twenty twenty-five Far West Texas Judges and Commissioners Conference, September seventeenth through nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, in Trilingual. And Commissioner Pavelik completed ten continuing education hours of twenty twenty-five Far West County Judges and Commissioners Conference, September seventeenth through the nineteenth, uh, also in Trilingual. Motion made by Commissioner Gillespie.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bowen. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, that motion carries. Uh, Ms. Felice, I don't know of an executive session, do you?
No, sir.
Okay, so no executive session today? Do you know of one, Ms. Barrera? That you know anything? Okay. Uh, so we have, get down to item number thirty. Um, discuss, review, take action, accept, and approve any invoices and payroll. Uh, so claim number three on payroll will be thirty-five thousand, four hundred seventy-four dollars, sixty-eight cents. Uh, claim number forty-six on payroll, seven hundred seventy-two thousand, two hundred twenty-six dollars and ninety-nine cents. Claim number forty-seven in payroll, twenty-one hundred, fifty-five dollars and eighty-seven cents. Claim number forty-eight in payroll, seven hundred fifty-three thousand, five hundred ninety-seven dollars and fifty-eight cents. Uh, claim number forty-nine in payroll, which will be voided at five thirty-nine, eighty-five. And claim number fifty should be processed at six hundred nine dollars and forty-two cents. Motion made by Commissioner Gillespie.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Pavelik. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, that motion carries. Uh, do we have any reports today, Ms.? Okay. So the last item today will be comments from Commissioners, and they'll actually be taken. Uh, we have the, uh, State of the County at five thirty this Thursday at the Justice Center. Uh, we hope everybody can make it out there. I think it'd be very informative, and a lot of new things coming that we wanna present, and thank a lot of people for their time and everything they put into this county. Also, we have the medical examiner's, examiner's groundbreaking at ten AM at JP One, right next door.